It's called order the Grant County Board of Commissioners work session for August 15th, 2017. Welcome everybody, please join us for the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the two hundred and thirty-fourth, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion of this world. Our school is like in the state of Mexico, the ZEAS has a little perfect friendship among the united cultures.
That's a little rough this time.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any changes need to come on the agenda matter? Anybody, any commissioners? No? Can I get a motion to approve?
So much.
A motion to approve the work session agenda? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six of us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The general purpose of our county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed in the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with the Grant County Resolution 1701, we welcome the public to attend, however the county work, the work session, however, there will be no public input permitted in the meeting. So at this time, I'll turn the agenda over, or the meeting over to Manager Webb, and she can review the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Under minutes, tabs A, B, and C, you have three sets of minutes for your review. They were included in your packets. If you have any questions or changes, please refer those to the county clerk, Mr. Yeo. Next item, financial reports. Item B, approve, disapprove, August 9th, 2017 expenditure report. Linda's on vacation, so Randy will go through the highlights of that.
Good morning. In your package, you have an expenditure report dated period ending August 9th for a total of $2,399,213.60. This is to include expenses, like I said, up to August 9th and two pay periods, as well as academic incentive. To highlight some of the expenses, this expense journal has been included in your packet. I believe it was requested last meeting, so now you can kind of see where, what we're reviewing. These will be expenses over $10,000, but all of the expenses are within the report.
Is that the front page?
I believe it's the second page. So we have a payment to Zallos Solid Waste Authority in the amount of $55,000. That is for the June monthly billing. Artesia fire equipment for $16,500. For bunker gear for Pinos Altos, that's for eight sets of bunker gear. Holly Frontier refining and marketing, uh, marketing for $101,000. For oil for the road special projects. Payment to Saca Dome Construction for $109,000. That's progress billing for the Alice Mesa Fire Station. White Sands Construction at $59,000. That's progress billing for the Tucasa Continuum of Care Facility. HCP Systems, that is billing for June and July medical management services at the Detention Center. Innovative Emergency Medical Associates, that's inmate billing as well. We have Red Express for $25,000. That's for the June fuel charges. The High Desert Humane Society for $16,500. That's for the quarterly, which is April through June, animal control services. A payment to the Silver City Chamber of Commerce for $12,000. That's for July and August management fee for the conference center. Payment to SWCA Environmental Consultants for $16,900. For cultural and biological services for the Mangas Creek Low Water Crossing. Payment to NMAC Mexico Association of Counties for $18,000. For fiscal year 2018 participation fees. A payment to Bob Turner Ford Country for $43,000. That is for a 2017 Ford F-150 with equipment that was purchased under the Stone Garden Grant, which is fully reimbursable. We have Ascend Aviation for $16,000, which is July jet fuel and then August three fuel release. Payment to Gorda Caminos for $30,000. This is cash match, which is paid through the DWI funds. Payment to Hidalgo Medical Services, this is for $47,000. This, these are the funds for the advisory that has, this is one of the last of the transfers that is going to them to manage for the management, but the advisory fund is separate from the actual grant funds. Payment to Tyler Technologies for $54,000. This is for the software renewal for both the Eagle Assessor and the Eagle Treasure Software. And a payment to Mora Enterprises for $14,000, which is the final billing for the North Hurley Road Colonialis project. Any questions?
Well, I hate to bring, keep taking a dead horse, but this check to Bob Turner Ford, is this something we could have done here in Grant County?
Not currently, sir.
Well, let's work on correcting that.
We are, we have, Jacob is releasing a blanket bid for a similar type vehicle that could be utilized for different departments with options written just exactly like the bid is on the state contract to give local vendors the opportunity, because none of them have, have, they're not vendors on CES, nor are they vendors on the state contract for the purchase of that particular vehicle.
For that particular, okay. Thank you.
This one, I, it may be because this is somewhat a new process giving us this list. I think it's very helpful. I think that'll be really good. But your goal there is to give us everything above $10,000, I think it says it on the sheet.
Right.
Maybe just for the purposes of completeness, I think check 185494 got left off the list. Twenty, almost $24,000 for professional document system, I assume that's?
That was actually the payment, that was, it should have been explained to you last fiscal year. Payment was misplaced or never received by the vendor, so we had to avoid that payment and reissue it. So it was already covered in the previous expenditure report.
Okay. Okay. Not a bad idea, just to make us less suspicious to tell us that as well. Okay. So that professional document system is on its way?
How it's already in place, sir? That's part of the novice agenda system.
Okay. I thought I was going to have a device here when it's in place that I can look at. Is that true?
Part of it's in place. We've had some hiccups with the video and the conversion of the video, so we're getting closer. Should be having training very soon.
Excellent. About sixteen more.
Yeah, that's right. I think I know why it's being delayed. All right. Thanks, Manny. That's out from you.
I want all this paper, but it's just.
Go for it.
So the Tyler Technologies, that is an annual fee for that software? So we pay $55,000 a year for this?
Things are cheap, are they? Anything else?
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, moving on. New business. Item E, approve, disapprove proclamation declaring August 13th, 2017 through August 19th, 2017 as National Health Center Week. This was submitted by HMS.
Are they going to be here to receive it? Maybe?
My understanding, yes.
Okay.
We will follow up today to make sure.
And we celebrated it last night, so we'd better approve the proclamation.
It's kind of like asking for approval on a loan after you've made it.
A lot like that.
Item F, approve, disapprove Grant County Veterans Memorial Acoustic and Audiovisual System. This is to complete the, uh, insulate, well, to install the audiovisual system and installation of acoustics in the large event room and the small event room in the conference center. We obtained a quote off of CES and a quote off the state contract. What you have in front of you is the quote from the state contract in the amount of And this is for audiovisual acoustics in the large event room, audiovisual and acoustics in the small event room, as well as a building-wide paging system for the grand total. The other quote that came off of CES for the same scope of work was $116,000.
That comes out of the construction fund?
So yes, this comes out of the construction fund, as I tried to explain at the last meeting. Is the hold harmless gross receipts tax that was bonded against for three projects, and this is a portion of that money that has to be dedicated to one of those three projects. So that's where these funds are coming from. It's not a hit to the general fund.
I would be curious to know what the balance of that fund was after this project, because we ought to be getting close to finished with this project and all the others.
Right. We are very close. Right now, there's a balance of about $336,000. Tucasa is on track. Hopefully, there's, we're not anticipating any large change orders there. And we do have some roping issues and boiler issues at the courthouse we would like to look at to finish out.
Finish out with that fund.
To spend these funds.
So basically, with the sign and this, we're looking at encumbering about $230,000 of that, 336 of that, right? Signs were a hundred?
The $336 was after.
All that.
Oh, after all that.
And then we are, Western Mexico University is going to pay for half of the sign.
And that $336 is out of the 6.2 million, not out of the 2.5 million that was roughly, okay, so that's out of the whole.
Yeah, there were 6.2 million in bonds issued for three projects, Tucasa, courthouse renovations, and renovations to the conference center.
And there's no concern with some funding slopping from one project to the other as necessary, right?
No, it's necessary.
This can all go as a package?
Right.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Okay, it's just, it's important for the public to know it's not reoccurring funds. It can't be used for salaries or, it has to be used for, for these specific projects. That's easy for you to say. And in these, in this area, so.
So I have some questions about the, the actual expenses on here, and I haven't, I haven't like gotten out Google, my friend Google.
Sure.
Since I imparted why you have questions, I think. This is about, partly about the duplex receptacle. So if you don't mind me, because it might make it unnecessary for you to say what you were going to say, I want to compliment Jacob Sanmora, your procurement person at the county. I asked him just this morning about some of the items here. There's a $125 duplex receptacle, for example, and, you know, I buy those for $1.25 because I'm not commercial, and you can get them for five if you're commercial. So he actually called and found out that that includes all the labor for pulling cable and installing cable, and for some reason, the statewide pricing agreement doesn't allow him, doesn't allow the bidder to put that labor.
In a separate light.
Anywhere else. I don't understand that, because they have, they clearly have labor for other things in other places. But he found that out quite quickly, and he was satisfied that the $125 per duplex is fair if it includes all that labor. So does that help what you were about to ask?
It does help.
Thanks for letting me interrupt that.
No worries.
And thanks to Jacob for doing that for me this morning.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on. Two agreements. Item G, approve, disapprove agreement number A1719, agreement with Energy Control Incorporated, Optera Energy Services for investment-grade energy audit and project proposal. Misha, do you want to go over that one more time?
Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, this, we already had a couple months ago on the agenda to discuss with you guys about having Optera Energy come out and do the energy audits for several of the county facilities. And this is the actual agreement that we're now entering with them to do the work, come through and figure out what we can do to save on energy costs.
And we are ready to do this, and some changes have been, have been made, and so we're, we're ready to move forward if it's your pleasure. Any more questions?
This contract does not obligate the county to pay anything if they don't end up doing the project, but the more contracts you can find like that, the better. We like those.
We were not lucky to follow them. If there's no further questions, moving on to item H, approve, disapprove agreement number A1725, amended joint powers agreement for the New Mexico cap entity, which was requested to be tabled until this meeting, for, I believe Commissioner Billings to do some further research. Questions, comments? Nope.
Find anything out you want to share with us?
Thursday, I guess.
Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be going to their meeting tomorrow.
I would like to know one thing about this. Luna County just passed this recently, two to zero, they only have two sitting members right now, unfortunately. And the statements made by their commissioners indicated they believed that if they did not pass this, that Luna County would no longer be a member of the cap entity. And I want to make sure that we are all clear that that's not true.
Right.
I don't know why they said those things. It was, Linda was quoted in the Deming Headlight, Linda Smarkowskis. We've got to keep our seat at the table, so we have to pass this. It's just not the case.
Okay, moving on. Item I, approve, disapprove agreement A1726, memorandum of understanding with Western New Mexico University for the Grant County Veterans Memorial Business and Conference Center Sign. Dr. Shepherd's actually already signed this, and they are agreeing to pay $65,916 of the sign. That would be half of the digital sign and installation plus GRT. The remainder would be, we would pay for the other half plus the Ace Hardware portion. So, questions?
I have one again.
Point three of the agreement of the now there four part says Western New Mexico University will be able to advertise for the university and any events on the digital sign as much as they require for the lifetime of the digital sign. You know, I think we can assume they'll operate in good faith, but here again, I feel like some agreement in writing, we might as well have a cap on it as much as they want. What if they decide they want 100% of the time that the digital sign is operating?
If there's events going on, what we agreed to do was advertise the same events that they advertise on their signs. So it will be whatever's going on at the conference center, this is what's going on at Western, this is what's going on wherever. That's, that's the intent of that, is to advertise events that are happening in the county, in the, within the town, the city, their events.
You know, Commissioner, one of the things that just popped into my head just now, maybe in the future, we ought to try to get the town, the university, and us, all three, to do some type of mutual agreement, because they have their digital sign downtown. We'd have one out here and they have theirs at lots. And maybe we should work towards maybe a mutual agreement where they all advertise events for us.
Town sign doesn't compare to the others.
No, it does not. Other than that, I think it's a great idea. Yeah, when I go by, if they, if they make it pithy, I'll read it. If it's too long, I can't.
I'm waiting. So. If my fellow commissioners have no concern about the fact that we're trusting Western, basically, not to dominate the sign?
I would like to see that language adjusted as well.
Well, they're not the ones putting it on there, we are. So they can submit that to us, but we're the ones controlling what goes on the sign.
But if we say, no, we're not putting that on the sign, can't they point to this agreement and say, you?
They could.
You said you would.
But I don't see that there's any reason not to put their events on the sign that's not going to dominate it, it's not going to be there for the whole entire day. It's going to fluctuate, there's going to be different things on there. That was, that was the intent. But if you choose to amend this now, then we have to send it back to Dr. Shepherd, and he may choose.
And that's why I'm seeking the wisdom of my, yeah, my fellow commissioners. You know, I think it's extraordinarily unlikely that they would do something like that. I'm just, I feel like several times, we've approved things that rely on good faith rather than on written word.
So what if, taking up the chairman's suggestion on having some kind of mutual agreement between all three entities for all three signs, and we could put in that agreement that that language of sharing supersedes?
This agreement.
That item number three in this agreement.
But it'd be a whole different agreement. It has nothing to do with this one, but I think we can.
We can approach Alex. I can approach Alex.
You guys agree with it?
Yeah, it's a little loose, as much as they require, because just, that's the language that.
Did Joe write it? Did Joe?
No, it was, we drafted it, they made some changes. Sorry, I was happy to get $65,000.
I totally agree. I'm not going to turn it down right now. No. Just get the money and then we'll go renegotiate the amount of advertising.
So we will, we will work on that, and I will approach Alex, and we'll work on an agreement, as the chairman suggested, with much tighter language, as Commissioner Brown suggested.
Well, and it'd be tight for all grounds.
Exactly.
Nobody, total decorum.
I have to say, it doesn't matter a lot to me, because I don't really go to those digital signs, and I know a lot of people who don't get to looking at the roads.
As they should be.
But in case somebody does look over there, we might want to have at least half the time, sort of, for things in Grant County or some time.
I think the whole idea is when somebody's at the stoplight, catches their attention and reminds them there's an activity going on. So, I mean, otherwise, we probably wouldn't be putting signs up, because we're at the risk of talking to somebody. Oh, well.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item J. Approved, disapproved agreement number A1727, grant agreement with Department of Finance and Administration of Local Government Division, State of New Mexico for enhanced 911 Act Grant Program. This is the annual grant agreement for the PSAP E911 related services. It provides money for GIF software. This is for dispatch, and the county is the fiscal agent for dispatch, therefore, the grant agreement runs through us. It's for the amount of $167,029. Let's untie there. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. Moving on to item K. Approved, disapproved agreement number A1728, agreement with Summit Food Service LLC for amendment number five to the prisoner food service contract. Summit is the food service contractor at the detention center. The amendment extends the term to July of 2018, and a schedule was provided to show you the annual increase per meal. And this happens every year. The original agreement references CPI, and this is just something that happens with any food service provider. So just standard procedure. Any questions?
How often does this agreement go out for bid or RFP, or do we have like a five-year agreement that has to be renewed every year?
I think the statute for this particular type of service now, you can go up to eight years. I mean, I know that there's, we can put it out to bid anytime we choose, but I believe Mr. Carrillo, for the, for the most part, has been, been pleased with their services.
As far as we're satisfied, I mean, just.
There's another question. I don't know. Approved, disapproved agreement A1729, agreement with Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments to provide services to Grant County. There's actually two parts to this. You'll see also, there's a resolution approving this agreement, but this is an agreement to become a member of the Southwest Club. This is something we do annually. Any questions, comments?
I think it's a great agreement, and we really have paying, paying to the dollar of what these people are worth. They, they do so much for us, and they bring a lot of money into our community, and, I mean, I, I think that's bare bones.
And Priscilla's a huge asset to the community.
She sure is.
And she helps us with a lot of things, so. Okay, no comments? Item M, approved, disapproved agreement A1730, memorandum of understanding for Code RED Emergency Notification Services. So our emergency manager recently received the annual, well, it's not annual, it comes every, I believe, every three years. The bill for Code RED, which is the emergency notification system for this countywide. He explained to me in the past that the city and the county had split that. He felt that maybe the other communities should contribute to that, so he went out and approached each of them. One of them suggested that perhaps we split it based upon population. So he divided it out amongst the population based on the last census, and, so therefore, that's the split amongst everyone. Our total portion is $6,000, and there's been some other of the municipalities that have already approved this, so.
According to the app, does Code RED do?
Code RED is if there is an emergency, if there's a flood, if there's a fire, they use it like to bring the Quail Ridge fire for evacuations. We've, and made escapes, any type of emergency, flooding.
Didn't they originally call it reverse 911?
It was, yes. It was, the original, way back when it first came out, it was called reverse 911. So if you have signed up for this, you'll get messages.
Come through a certain area, you have to leave the name the same, so it can confuse us.
Right. It's.
So if you're signed up, and anything happens, then you'll get a text message, or an email, or some form of communication from the system to evacuate or do whatever. Where, so if you get this message, let's just say it's a fire, if you get this message, does the message tell you where the fire is? Does it give you, how do you then get the directions that you need in order to know what to do?
Well, it's based on whoever's putting the message out and the information, but yes, that is the idea. And when it's done properly, then yes, they would tell you that there is, and it can be isolated to like your particular area, or it can be countywide. There's many different ways to, to utilize it. So if it's done properly, then yes, it would tell you there is a fire, you can evacuate to the conference center, those sort of things. And then they will continue to update you on, on those situations.
And this is managed by Mr. Gavia's office?
No, this is, Gilbert Helton is the contact, because he's the emergency manager, but I know that the sheriff can utilize it, Gilbert can utilize it, Randy can utilize it for fires, there's difference, you can have difference.
So you just call, and say we have an emergency, we need this to go out on Code RED?
Mr. Helton, have anything around?
Is he here?
Yes.
Do you want to comment some more, Gilbert? I didn't see you back there.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Code RED is usually, is managed by central dispatch mostly. However, any incident commander at any incident can request a Code RED message, and they can do that several ways. And one of the, the majority of the times that we've used it has been through central dispatch. They request a central dispatch send a, a message to a certain geographical area in the county, and it, explaining what to do because of that incident. And so basically, that's the way, but anybody else can use it if, if they have access to it at that point in time. In other words, the IC usually doesn't have time to do it, so that's why we've gone with central dispatch, because they do all the dispatching and the notifications.
A really big deal right after Quail Ridge, because it, that was kind of, kind of a mess trying to get people in and out of there and stuff, and there was some, some, some of the public came forward with, with this, and it started out small and became bigger and bigger and bigger. We really haven't used it much since then, but it's been used a little bit, but Randy, you got something?
Chairman and Commissioners, I think it's just important that, because you, you have people consistently calling central dispatch, so it gives us an opportunity as incident commanders to say, to reach out, like Gilbert said, and say, send this message out to this quarter of, of the Grant County, and there's a fire, or there's a earthquake, or whatever, and this is what's going on, and that eliminate the calls of central dispatch as well.
Probably wouldn't hurt to have a little continuing education to all the people that are able to make those type of decisions and send out those type of messages on how to develop that message, because some of these people may not have the ability to do it yet.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I think that's where we come in with the Forest Service and working with the volunteer party comments. I don't know if LFC has worked with that. Also, Gilbert, you want to comment on that? But we do work on the fire side, making sure that we understand how this process works.
Yes. All of our, all of our local drills mention Code RED and include Code RED. We make sure that they understand that it's there for their use, and the people who have to send those messages are very well educated on it, and they are doing it.
So are the smaller communities, their police departments and fire departments included in the ability to?
They, yes, sir, yes, they do. And we will be, we will continue to hold drills, more drills in the future, and bringing that up to them. And we're also gonna, I'm gonna start a camp. And we're also gonna, I'm gonna start a campaign and trying to educate the, the community that it's an opt-in type of program, so it's very important that you opt in and hopefully gets a lot of the local businesses in all the jurisdictions to, to opt into it because it's very important that everybody has the same notification.
I know that. No big deal because it's kind of a flight of fancy, but I get very effective flash flood warnings, right? To make a loud noise and I definitely pay attention to them and they're very localized I assume, unlike Amber Alerts which I get from towers and things like that. But is there any way that Code Red can tie into the system that sends the localized weather warnings or is that impossible because of different bureaucracies?
Well, we do have the opportunity to, to do that. It'll be a little bit more cost, I think approximately a thousand dollars a year is what they told me, was the latest figure they gave me. But yes, we do have that opportunity to do so and we will explore that in, in the future after this memorandum of understanding is, is in place so we can, so we can ensure, so we can enhance the system.
I would support that. If it's, if it's really a thousand compared to a total of fifteen thousand, I'd say we're getting more than one fifteenth improvement if we do that.
Thank you.
And I believe we had a mock drill at one time after the Quail Ridge, right? Are we planning on having any of those mock drills? Because I think it's been quite a while and we're probably way overdue.
We have several, we've had several drills, Commissioner. In fact, I'm gonna meet after this, after I'm done here, I go to Hila Regional Medical Center for a meeting to, to plan the next local drill that we're gonna hold and, and this will be included, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Item N. Approved disapprove agreement number A seventeen thirty-one, consent agreement to finance and purchase the following motor graders to Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation. The current lease agreement for the county road department blades is expiring and so what this does is allows us to purchase and lease the same amount of blades moving forward for another five years. So, what we do is we trade in the existing blades, purchase new and then lease those through Caterpillar Financial. And this is a five-year lease with a five-year warranty.
It's curious why there's such a wide circle of questions to someone who needs it.
Um, it was, the trade-in amount was different on some of them, so each, each of the trade was a little different.
So, essentially the idea is that this, we're leasing in perpetuity, that it gives us the opportunity to have new equipment every five years, correct?
Yes.
So, it's always under warranty?
Correct. Any other questions? No? Item O. Approved disapprove agreement A seventeen thirty-two to purchase a backhoe from Wagner Caterpillar. This was the backhoe that was stolen from the Tucasa site. The, this is the amount off the state contract, eighty-seven thousand five forty-five. We received insurance recovery check in the amount of sixty-six thousand four ninety-nine, so it'd be a net effect to us of twenty-one thousand forty-six.
If we're putting our equipment now with GPS trackers or something so that we can find them, right? If it's really that easy to make off with a backhoe, can we just put a tracker on it?
Excellent idea and I know that Caterpillar does do that on the blades. Can we do that on us?
The new backhoes are gonna have the GPS. Our blades have already got them. They actually will ping my phone if somebody starts them after hours around the weekends and when we get that backhoe in, then we'll get it set up the same way.
That's great to hear.
One thing that if it ends up down there in Mexico, it's, it's down there in Mexico. There ain't nothing they can do about that.
I don't think you can get it past the border without declaring duty on it.
There you go.
I would like to see us look at a GPS system for all the county vehicles. I know they're doing that in Hidalgo now and boy has that improved their work ethics, put it that way. So, I really think we need to start looking at putting on sheriff's department vehicles, I mean, all our vehicles throughout the, throughout the county.
We have installed those on our maintenance department vehicles. It seems to be curbing some of the abuse. So, I think it's an excellent idea and I think it's worth every penny.
I feel it's like seven dollars per vehicle. With the blades that we have now, it tells me how much idle time, how much working time, it tells me everything, how much fuel they burn today. It's a real neat program they have on us.
And how much downtime to work.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Moving on to resolutions. Yes, the answer I said was sixty-six thousand.
So, is that coming out of that twenty-one thousand? Ouch. Yeah, that's huge. Is that coming out of general, I mean, just, is that coming out of the cost of construction funds, right?
No, it's not. It's actually, we have capital projects funds that we put a little bit of money in for issues like this that might come up.
Self-insured.
Take the D P S money right out of there and swipe it.
Right. You gotta take it.
Put it this way, I mean, that backhoe wasn't new, we probably used twenty-one thousand dollars, excuse me, twenty-one thousand dollars worth of that backhoe. Now we're getting a new one.
I hope you're right.
It appears that's how I have to look at it because it's never coming back.
Any other questions, comments? Moving on to resolutions. Item P. Approved disapprove resolution R seventeen thirty-five, a resolution adopting an infrastructure capital improvement plan for Grant County. Lisa, would you please go over this?
Yes, thank you. Chairman, Commissioner, the I C I P or the infrastructure capital improvement plan is required by state. The deadline for us to submit it and as we approve our resolution is September first. We also have the I C I P which you have attached to this resolution for the two senior centers this week. That one required that we have it submitted to the state by September fifteenth, so we did all the public meetings. I started those back in April and I mentioned it several times during the commission meetings that the public was welcome to input and I submitted the I C I P to all of you guys to review and I did get input and that's the final that is in front of you.
So, does that court have to do with two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand? Is that a good number?
Yes. Jason Lockett has got a quote. That is the high end. They would have to do some infrared when they come in, that's about two thousand dollars to do an I R over it. That is if the whole decking has to be replaced, that's where that number comes in. So, that's why we put that number in the I C I P. If the decking doesn't have to be replaced, then all they have to do is go in and fix it. If we just have major water damage, that, that number will be significantly lower.
So, the top three are eligible for capital outlay, that's right, right?
Yes, correct.
And the top five are eligible for the grants and such.
Well, I would like to see if we can get the Grant County Water Storage Facility up and for those that are thinking, it has nothing to do with the Hila. It's to create a storage facility for the affluent waters coming out of the Beard Facility. And we had it in the top five a while back, but there was nothing really moving on it. But now Santa Clara has actually put out a hundred thousand dollars to do the study, so I really think we need to move it back up so we can hopefully correlate with those monies that are already being used and, and gain some monies and try and work something on this project. That's my opinion.
You move it to the top five?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's way larger than the other items there, right?
If you look at the total amount not yet funded?
Yes, sir.
Almost ten million. I don't know, it's my first year on the job, so I don't know exactly how this works, but the top five right now add up to less than two million. So, surely it's not as simple as just moving it up.
Well, really you only gotta look at the two thousand nineteen expenditures on the top five, so.
Because they'll fund something that requires.
Even if they fund a small portion and we hopefully can go to Interstate Stream Commission, I know this is a project that the different groups have actually said that they're behind. So, I think it'd be pretty easy to do this, but there's probably gonna be some costs that's gonna have to come out of the county.
Right. So, what you identify in your, there's a lot of more documentation. This is just a summary page. So, whenever you submit these, then you have, you have another page for each project on there that identifies can be phased, which this would obviously be a phased project. What are the other funding sources? So, you identify that you have local funds, Santa Clara, Grant County, Town and Shore City, that you're looking at state funds or federal funds and so you identify all of those funding sources and that particular, there's a more detailed document that goes behind each one of these. So, they want to know what are your capital improvement plans in the future, what are your anticipated sources of revenue, can that project be phased? And that's one of the main things they look at is what is your plan to phase that project out in the future? And that's become very important in the last three or four years as you, when we submit these, they really look at that. And if you put in there that, no, it can't be phased, then they'll come back and say, show me how you can phase this. So, that would be critical in, in that.
How many buses is the Corytunos? Is that two? Two teams?
Yes.
There seems something arbitrary, and maybe I just need to go to a workshop, about saying you can have three projects we'll fund and five they're eligible for grants without consideration for the amounts involved and.
Yeah, and if it's too big, you're not gonna give it anyway, that's part of the, part of the game.
That's part of.
I don't know what capital outlay will be this year.
Right.
I don't know that anybody knows what capital outlay.
Right, no, I think you're right.
This year.
It depends on what governor is in there. This is, this is a result of.
Well, and you're gonna have, you, so you need to have three projects in there of various sizes because if we go up and our representatives say, hey, we're gonna have that, we're probably gonna get you in the three.
I see.
Well, then, then you can go for the bigger one, but if they say, it's gonna be seventy-five thousand, so the max we're gonna get for you, you know, get a good project, you want one of those in there also.
And I don't, they take into consideration if it's a regional project and this would all by as a regional project. And I think regional projects are actually opt to getting more, more monies and more backing for different.
To have that project moved up, what we'd have to do is realign the two thousand nineteen expenditures with a realistic amount that we would want and move that, move, push all that out a year and, and put a planning grant in there for fifty thousand or whatever because we're not gonna get seven fifty.
Not realistic.
It's not from the legislature. Now, they made that, the seven fifty may be obviously legitimate from the cap, they have that.
And we've also been waiting for the study to be completed so we could go through the borough reclamation, just the different areas where we could try and get some of these monies.
Some amount was already approved by the cap or by the I S C, right? For a non-diversion alternative funding?
Yes.
But didn't this project get some allocation of that?
Not as of right now.
Or it got zero?
Zero as of now. Although it wasn't one of the top projects at the beginning, didn't get any monies.
Okay.
And so, just so you know how this ties into when we apply for capital outlay and we submit those capital outlay applications, then they want to see that those are on your I C I P and you have to identify which number of projects. And if you try to, what I've seen happen is if you have a project that's not in your top three, your, your legislator's funded, it gets to the governor's desk, she will veto it if it's not in your top three. So, that's how that all ties together. There, there are instances where I get surprises where they slip through and end up on my desk, but most of the time, if it's not identified as one of your top three needs on your I C I P, it gets vetoed when it reaches her desk.
So, a fair amount of coordination that goes into preparing this list, which makes me worry, and again, only because I'm new, that if we make a last minute change, we're talking about, we have, we have two days to decide this, which is a deadline.
September fifteenth.
The senior centers is September fifteenth, so this one I do have to have in the system, in the computer system.
Is there any option to edit it as, as time goes on?
No.
This is it?
This is it.
One, no one shot over?
Yes.
And how many public hearings have you had?
We had four.
And attendance was normal?
Yes.
So, maybe my question will remain to this conversation about top three and top five and all that. Is this, are we talking about the same courthouse that we bonded money to, really?
Yes, and we're hoping that we have enough money to, to fix it, to seal it or whatever, but if we have to, we don't have enough money to let in there to, to fix it, if we, if we have to replace the entire decking and.
Well, it seems like if we have three thirty-six, that we would still be able to do it even if we had to replace the entire decking, but obviously you're getting close.
Right, and I want to make sure that I don't short us on Tucasa if we were to encounter a change order in that facility and that.
Besides that, it's a really good project that will be looked at favorably, so you can use that money on other, other projects in that area.
So, I can listen to that on the courthouse that.
Those three.
There's, something else I'd like to bring up on that, sorry. And we actually passed a resolution probably, what, four years ago stating there's a state of emergency. And when it comes to the flowing waters being that the waters are coming out ninety-eight percent pure and they're heading to the tailings and going straight into the tailings and we're contaminating purified water. And we thanked Freeport for being generous enough to accept that water because they're the only ones that could. But at the same time, I think it's a sin that we're putting purified water back into the tailings. And that's why I feel that it's so important that we need to move on and try and get this storage facility built as soon as possible so that we can start building a better aquifer in that area.
So, I would be for replacing the administration parking lot with the, the water storage facility and getting it to number four.
I know you got a lot of.
It's got some beautiful striking on it right now.
It's very uneven.
But I saw those guys out there vol, I think they were volunteering, right? On Sunday, I came by.
It was, it was. A Boy Scout who did it for us.
That was awesome.
That's great.
Yeah, it was great. So, uneven or not.
They did an awesome job.
It makes me willing also to postpone work on the parking lot.
I would concur with that as well.
I can explain why the parking lot is up that high because we've had a workers' complaint for employees falling in the cracks in the parking lot as well as public stepping in the cracks. It is a little tricky when you walk out in heels. That, that's why it was moved so far.
Make it a no-heel area.
Can we just fill those cracks as hard like the street departments do?
Well, I, I mean, if you want to leave the parking lot up there, then the only other option would be to, in my mind, is to move the bus down, but I, I think.
I'm just explaining why the parking lot.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
That was the only, that was the only reason.
So, Earl, could we do that?
We could, it'd be really expensive to rent a property management. We're, we're not capable of doing something like that.
Okay, that was my question. Can we do it in-house?
So, bump up the water to.
Are the security upgrades at the detention center, is, that looks like too little to be the fence that we've long discussed needing. What, what is that?
The fence is moved into the twenty-twenty price. The sixty-five thousand is for the upgrades to cameras, D R's, intercoms. We've been trying to phase that in as we can afford it.
So, the fence is off to twenty-twenty. You will be safe by that. No pun intended. Okay, maybe there's a little.
So, I'd start an incline to take the courthouse roof from there.
That would be a question I would touch.
Well, because we have other money to do it. What if we took half of it off? Well, I guess, never mind, I can't do that. So.
Try to piece this together, but if we have other money to do it, can we not use that other money to do one of these other projects?
It's part of the bond for the three projects.
But I'm, I'm also concerned about change orders in, in New Mexico.
Understood, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, is that not a lengthy discussion? Could we go ahead with the meeting and come back to this? I'm just thinking about some of these people that make salaries way above what I make and they're sitting here just wanting to get back to work.
Yeah, we can, if you guys want to do that, that's fine.
I just don't see a quick resolution of this.
Well, this is discussion, would not the final be on Thursday and. Well, this is a discussion, would not the final be on Thursday and...
Yep. I think everybody, everybody had to say, I mean, so if you wish to amend it, we will amend it on Thursday.
Moving on to item two. Approved, disapproved resolution R seventeen thirty-six, adoption of retired community development slot grant, CDBG annual certification and commitments. This is a requirement of the CDBG program, has to be done annually. No options. We want to continue to receive the money we have to. Item R. There you go with the long titles. Approved, disapproved resolution number R seventeen thirty-seven, authorizing the execution and delivery of a local government planning grant agreement by and between the New Mexico Finance Authority and Grant County in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, evidencing an obligation of the grantee to utilize the grant's amount and the local match amount solely for the purpose of financing the cost of a comprehensive plan and solely in the manner described in the grant agreement. Certifying that the grant amount together with the local match amount and other funds available to the grantee is sufficient to complete the project, approving the form of and other details concerning the grant agreement ratifying actions heretofore taken, repealing all action inconsistent with this resolution and authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of this grant agreement. In short, this is a grant agreement for the Mexico Finance Authority to pay for the portion of the comprehensive plan. We have to finish the comprehensive plan, submit that that it had been approved and adopted by the board, and they will in turn pay us the twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Have the office been able to advertise that title in their press than we get from the grant, doesn't it?
It's pretty tough.
Yeah.
Maybe we could look at it when you're shortening them because you get to read it on Thursday.
I'm going to abbreviate it.
Any questions on that?
No.
Item S. Approved, disapproved resolution R seventeen thirty-eight, a resolution ratifying agreement number A seventeen twenty-nine between Grant County and the Southwest Mexico Council of Governments dated August seventeen, two thousand seventeen, and authorizing the execution of same. This is what I discussed previously that we had the agreements. In the future, we will just incorporate this all in a resolution adopting the agreements. But I didn't catch that before this was published, so it's a little confusing this thing.
So I thought that was going to be removed from this meeting.
Oh, it added a slight way, it's on there.
You're going to let that be explained?
We have to change the notice of intent because now we're looking at September, so we had to put it back on here.
Okay, that's enough said. Yeah, we're over it, Alicia and I. Keep up.
We're back to the classroom, man.
Item C. Approved, disapproved resolution R seventeen thirty-nine, notice of intent to consider an ordinance authorizing the operation of up-highway motor vehicles on streets or highways owned and controlled by Grant County. Abby, would you like to explain?
This is the same thing that you've seen before. I received some recommendations for revisions and I'll be working on those. I received them when I was out of town, so I wasn't able to work on them before this week, but we should be able to get all the way through them easily in the next month before the next meeting. So I apologize for the delay, but we're still on track.
Could you provide those revisions for the rest of this so we can...
Sure, would you like me to get through them first though?
Are you going to redline it so we know what's new, what's old?
They are red.
They are red.
We have to greenline it.
They'll only be red after I read them.
Yeah, I'll figure out some way. What I can do is I can also give you the recommendations and a draft that I've worked on. I'll figure out how to make it so you can see.
Okay, that'd be nice. And more than just a couple of days before.
Yes.
Can we contract them?
It's in the next...
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Couple of days, I'll start on that.
In general for insurance liabilities, is that this?
Some of that stuff, yeah.
Okay.
You're welcome to pick up a copy of the recommendation, what the requested revisions are, but I haven't worked through them yet, but you're welcome to look at them if you like.
It's kind of a curious process to me. I used to be curious about it when I sat out there and now I'm curious about it when I sit up here. Do you just take any recommendation and incorporate it into the draft if I came to you and said, you know, I think the O H Vs need to weigh at least five thousand pounds, let's put that in there?
I could. Sometimes I could come up with, I don't usually have this many recommendations for revisions, but when I do, a lot of times we'll go through different drafts. I can make two separate drafts with, you know, one going one way and one going the other. Right now, I'm not seeing much conflict, so we'll probably have one draft is where I'm going right now, but if I get feedback, you know, from you all coming in telling me I don't want that in there, I might be prepared for...
For example, that paved roads be excluded. If I came to you with that, you might put that into this one draft that we would then be moving on in September.
But that's the whole idea is to let them use it, utilize it on paved roads.
I brought up an example I knew would be controversial to understand how this process is going to work.
It just may be that you don't agree in the end and we end up crossing something off based on the actual vote.
Or we don't add it and just add it on the actual vote.
Something like that.
Because that's usually the way we do it. We really don't have very many changes...
It just depends on the information that I've received.
Being put into something that hasn't been, that isn't going to be voted on.
It just depends on the information, whatever I've received, I try to incorporate it.
Well, that was before, you know, I joined the commission.
That's true.
But, I mean, we'll get to, the final product will be what, you know, the majority votes on. It may not be perfectly written at the time you adopt it because you may have disagreements on that day, but I'll try to get it as close to what I think you want based on revisions submitted to me. And if I see a real divergence, I'll, you know, I'll put two different options. We've done that with resolutions before, things like, it doesn't always go perfectly smooth, so I'll try to be ready for it.
Well, thanks for explaining that and, Gabe, apart from knowing that I caused trouble, it's also true that with five people, you're likely to have more opinions.
You're right, you're right. But it's also very easy to just go ahead and get it, put it on the agenda and make the changes in instead of having you put things on, then removing them, then putting them back on, then removing them. It just creates conflict for you.
It may depend on how much I have to put in. I'll get it, again, as looking as good as I can with the revisions I have now, and then I will distribute a copy to that, a copy of that to you all so you can take a look at it in advance and give me feedback so I know where we're going.
I think it makes sense for you to do what I hear you saying, trying to divine what's the most likely outcome based on things you're hearing. And the big reason I think that makes sense is we want the public to have a draft that's as close as possible to what we'll actually be dealing with so that they can evaluate it. So that makes sense to me that you would attempt to do that. Along those lines, I have a procedural concern, and that's that when we publish this notice, it says that a draft is available at the clerk's office. And I don't believe that's always the case.
There is always a draft in the minutes of the meeting. It may not be the final draft, but there is a draft.
Sometimes that's a big difference, the final.
If any of you are concerned or the public is concerned and they want to know if there's a more updated draft that's available, they're welcome to come to the manager's office and ask. It's not an issue at all, we're happy to provide it. But yes, the draft that's in the clerk's office is in the minutes, it's always in the minutes, but it may not be the final draft. And often it's not, because sometimes you make changes right at the meeting, like we've just discussed.
So what I think Commissioner Brown is asking is like, once you disseminate the draft that you think is as close to what the final is to the commission, that we should provide that to the clerk so the public could...
We can.
Is that what you think?
Yes, we do.
Sure.
That would be the, I think, the easiest improvement to make that would address my concern. So thank you.
Moving on to RFPs. Item L. Approved, disapproved RFP seventeen oh three, inmate health services for the Grant County Detention Center. I realize that what was in your packets was quite vague. It showed that you had three responses to the RFP, received responses from Core Health, Core Values, and HCP Systems. And the reason it was vague is Jacob and I were in the process of negotiating a best and final offer with the high-ranking proposal. The high-ranking proposal was Core Values, and we felt that they've given us the best option. We will be looking at grand total, I'm glad you're all sitting down, five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars annually. And this is expanding our current services, which is needed. And hopefully, the idea is with the expansion of services in the jail, it reduces the amount of transports being made to the emergency room, reducing the amount of indigent claims as well as our overtime costs that are attached to making those transports to the ER on a daily basis. So, any questions?
So that five hundred and twenty-six thousand, how much is that? Is reimbursable through some sort of program?
None. We pay it out of the indigent grocery receipts tax increment because all inmates are considered indigent according to our policy. So that's how, that's where it's paid from, but none of that is reimbursable.
And there's a one-eighth out there.
Another one of those, we don't have a choice. We have to provide them the best medical care we possibly can. There's no further questions on that. We'll move on to indigent, or the health claims, healthcare claims board. Item V. Approved, disapproved June and July two thousand seventeen health plan claims, formerly known as the indigent plan, in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. Please note that this is for two months, not one. We received two, unless they had some software issues. And then there's twenty-two claims to Hila Regional Medical Center in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-one cents, and eleven claims to Hila Regional Medical Center ambulance in the amount of eleven thousand fifty-five dollars and forty-eight cents for the total of sixty thousand nine twenty-one ninety-nine. Questions, comments?
Yeah, starting a new year, it's a great time to start a new procedure where we get to see this amount compared to what we are planning to take in. I think I'd requested this before, from that one-eighth increment that has an amount that we're expecting to receive from it, right? And these start charging against that, basically.
So that we can see the way.
And, yeah, and I had requested that, that you just add a line that says, after this, you know, our remaining budget will be X or whatever.
And I think Linda told me that she had that discussion with you, and I understood her to say she would provide you a monthly budget report. Is that what you're wanting?
Yeah, I guess that, right, so she's going to do that, not with this, but separately with her report?
That was my understanding.
Okay.
But I can follow up with her. She's on vacation this week, I'll follow up with her. But you want a running balance of what is left in that particular fund?
Just from the indigent fund?
Yeah.
Just from what comes in monthly and what goes out monthly?
Yeah. Do you think that that's asking too much?
No.
So...
I think one of them trails by a month. It's going to kind of be messy there because you get...
You know, basically, I just approve these without context, and I don't like doing that. So if I had context knowing, hey, this is putting us on a track that we're going to be dipping in the operating, the general fund, you know, to cover twenty thousand dollars by the end of the year, I can't do anything about their health, but I want to know that.
Because of business, I incur, I collect grocery receipts tax for July. I pay it to the state in August, and the state pays us in September. However, the expenses are real time, maybe a month behind, I don't know. And so there's a little disconnect there, but I mean, if you're okay with the averages, I don't think that's a problem. I mean, you know what comes in on May. I think it's three months late, though.
It is, so like, what is, so you have the collection month, then it's, when it is taxed and rev receives it, then it's distributed to us in the third month. So it's not always going to match up. But what I was going to say, there is a provision in the statute of the Indigent Act that you are required to pay for all indigent health claims. You can choose to move that money from the general fund into that to cover those claims in that particular fiscal year, or you roll those claims into the next fiscal year. You can never deny payment of an indigent claim. So you're going to pay it irregardless, whether you do it within this fiscal year or next fiscal year.
Right. Yeah, I realize that. It's informational rather than something that takes action based on.
And these expenses are completely beyond our control. This may be one or two people who decide they need healthcare and they get whatever they want.
No, there's criteria that has to be met. With the change in the Affordable Care Act and the extension of Medicaid, the whole Indigent Healthcare Act changed somewhat. You used to have, you would have people who would come in off the street who needed help with their medical bills, but that's changed in the last few years. So typically, what you see counties using this for is for inmate medical. But there are criteria that have to be met, so we don't just pay bills for anyone. And if you don't meet that criteria, then that claim is denied.
Well, that's what I was referring to as though the inmates, if an inmate decides they need medical services, they get it and we pay for it, right?
Well, it's not that they decide, but if an inmate submits a sick call and says, I'm sick, I have a headache, or I'm sick at my stomach, or I'm having chest pains, then yes, we have to address that immediately. So we refer them to our internal healthcare provider, which is what the bid is for, and we address that. Then that healthcare provider determines whether or not they can address those needs or they send them to the ER or they transport them out. The goal is to get a little bit more adequate healthcare services in there so that we reduce the amount of transports to the ER, but we cannot deny them, even if it's the same guy who says, I have a runny nose for three days in a row, and he puts in sick calls, we can't ignore that.
And some of this may be more associated with mental health than actual physical health, that the mental health manifests itself in some sort of a physical thing that may be, may or may not be real.
Correct, and, you know, we have, we have to pay for that as well. And yes, this particular one, I know what the majority of this is, and it was one individual, and yes, some mental health issues contribute to that. So this has just been, it's been a challenging month at the jail, well, challenging last two or three months at the jail in regards to medical all the way around. So it's just unfortunate, but it's our responsibility. Any other questions or comments? Item W. Approved, disapproved indigent burial for bright senior home. We have one, one, one side vacation, the amount of six hundred dollars. That's also set by statute. Questions?
Nope.
That's it.
Okay, so you belong to county reports, and we'll start with Kathy. Welcome today. If the microphone's not on, push the little white button till it turns red.
All right, may I approach?
Sure.
For those of you, for those of you who do not know, this is Jobette Bass. She's our interim CFO and will be present by my side to answer any kind of financial questions that you have. I am very, very honored to be in front of you today to give a report. I shared this with our Board of Trustees in July's meeting, and it was my first fifty days in review of being in this position here at Hila Reach. So I will not go over all of this, but summarize the categorization. So I will not go over all of this, but summarize the categories for you. I guess the biggest topic at that time was where are we on the cancer center and in that whole transition? So there have been many things that have happened in the first fifty days. Contract was signed. We started going through what the elements of the transition, which were required. We did hire six caregivers from the previous staff. We were able to hold on to those. We have, as of this point, credentialed two of the UNM physicians. They have already been credentialed, and we have several others in the pipeline. Interviews have been underway for several weeks for the locums or temporary assignments for full-time, until a full-time provider physician could be hired. And as of right now, we have one exceptional middle-level candidate who is interviewing today and will be scheduled to go to Albuquerque for an interview next Wednesday. And if that interview goes well, this individual will be hired, go, return to Albuquerque for two weeks of training, and return back to our campus. At that time, we will have full service starting. We're very excited about this. Yes, sir?
So is Healey Regional hiring this person, or UNM?
UNM will be hiring this individual. The other employees are employees of Healey Regional, though. Okay? Let's see. We, in the, for the sake of looking at how, with transparencies on the medical records of patients, we were not given all medical records. We were only given a list of thirty-eight patients who were under current treatment. We thought this was the full list of current patients, but it was not. But we started immediately calling the list that we did have to try to arrange ongoing care for these patients. And I must tell you that the physicians in our community have been outstanding. They have been working with oncologists at UNM to actually be ordering some of the care that these patients can receive, such as port flushes, blood work that needs to be done here instead of sending them somewhere else. So we have already started with that. We've been arranging care for patients. Some patients, we've even arranged for hotels to stay in Las Cruces when they're there for two days. Not everyone, but it's on an individualized basis. In addition to that, we are doing a lot of marketing and trying to highlight these individuals who are staying with our cancer treatment center. We want them to get the recognition that they certainly deserve, because I don't think they've ever been highlighted. And surely, they are a very, very big strength to that service line. So before I go on, do we have any questions for me on that? Yes, sir?
This exceptional mid-level applicant that you have, what it sounded like to me was, when that person, if that person is hired and comes back here after training, then we'll have full service back at the cancer center?
Yes, sir, we will. It will start with one of the physicians coming down once a week, which is what we had previously. And then when the full-time physician is hired, that will be a person who is here Monday through Friday, working with our mid-level.
So now it sounds like there are two parts. There's the mid-level, and there's the full-time physician?
No, no, well, let me just back up a little bit.
Thank you.
When we hire the mid-level, and they go through their training, and they're on campus, UNM will be sending a physician down, an oncologist, once a week.
So we're calling that full service, but it's just...
Yes. It will be the same service that people did have before. However, the only caveat to this is our radiology, that piece of it, we still have to get equipment in to service that software for their medical records. So that piece will not be ongoing until that is done.
So, back to the timing question.
Yes, sir.
The mid-level person, it sounds like the soonest we could expect him or her to be here would be three weeks or so from now.
Correct.
And then after that, the radiology, how much time do you think for that machine to deal with our software?
Well, probably, looking at several months for that. Because we have to, and JoBeth can share this with you also, there's a specific type of equipment that has to go on the machine itself. There is software involved in it. That was just approved at the emergency board meeting that we had. There are some tweaks that had to go in with that software. Now it's being purchased. Once it's purchased, we get it onboard, it's installed, there's in servicing, there's testing, and then it's ready to go. But we already have RadOx physicians available to come here.
Thank you very much.
Yes, certainly. Any other questions on that topic? As you can see, this report is broken down into several sections, and you will see that on all my board reports and any report coming here. It's based on service, quality, safety, finance, growth, and people, because this is what our business strategy is. The most important piece of this, I think, is the quality and safety initiatives. As you know, we need to be a high-reliability facility in which there are minimal safety risks to any patient that comes to our facility, also minimal safety risk for any provider or caregiver in our community. So we do, we have started daily safety huddles with leadership, and also, they have started with our departments. Every day, we look at safety issues, we look at quality issues, and those are assigned to someone of accountability and must be resolved by the next day. We have an ongoing list of these issues and initiatives, and we look at this to hold people accountable on a daily basis. On the finance piece of it, we did have a recent inventory, which had been lacking to the depth of this inventory. This inventory will be twice a year, and I believe during this inventory, we were able to capture about two-hundred and, what?
It ended up about a hundred and fifty.
About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the bottom line because of the inventory. We are negotiating every single contract with vendors, including our physicians. As they come up, we're looking at each contract to make sure that we are in the true realm of fair market value, and that we don't even have any compliance issues to be addressed. We are also looking at every service line to make sure that they're hitting all of their expectations as far as targets. We're looking at all clinic operations. We're looking at the finance department to make sure that we have the appropriate reporting structures, and that we're looking at every physician to make sure it is highly qualified people in those positions, that they're effective and producing. As far as our growth, we will be looking not only at all of our clinics, to make sure we have the right clinics, and we're hitting our volumes, and we're looking at all strategies for growth, but that we're also looking at bringing in other service lines which are duly needed for this community, to prevent people from going outside this community for their healthcare. We're also looking at outpatient testing, we're looking at surgery volume, and we're looking under emergency department at all of those indicators, which are transfers, visits, length of stay, left without being seen, and patients leaving against medical advice, door-to-doc time, decision to admit, and length of stay. We also have a caveat for people in our community and in our hospital. General surgery, we had a candidate come in who is very, very interested in being in our community, to be a full-time surgeon. And we also have to look, when we look at bringing people in, not just services that are needed in this community, but also what services may be dwindling due to retirement, age, health, all types of reasons that may indicate that we need to back full positions. Our CFO, we did interview a full-time CFO candidate. Next week, we will be interviewing two more candidates, and we're hoping that by the end of the year, to secure someone so that they can train with JoBeth before she leaves at the end of the year. These are just a few of the things that we are undertaking. But I will tell you this, that in my first fifty days, it was most important for me to understand the workings, not only the workings of our hospital and the level of people that we have giving direct patient care, but also the upper levels. I found that we were very top-heavy in our organization, and as you know, this is most important for you to right-size yourself. Our business is taking care of patients, and so I will tell you that no direct patient care provider was affected by this or will be affected by this. But we have to continue doing this. This is a business, and our business is taking care of patients. And we want to make sure that we're able to do that, not just for right now, but in our future. My job is to secure the financial viability of this hospital, and make sure that in the future, we are committed always to providing what this community needs. I think one area that is sorely lacking in this community is mental health, and I will be working with all of you to make sure that not only are we meeting your needs, but if we can't meet your needs, and we can't meet everyone's needs, and you do understand that, that we are working with this community to build those agencies that will address the needs that we cannot provide. So right now, if you don't have any questions with me, I would like to turn it over to JoBeth to give you a current state of affairs of our financial status. Yes, sir?
On growth, when you talk about the emergency department, I'm very happy to see that you're talking about transfers. I think transfers, if you look back, you'll find out that that's exponentially exploded in the last ten years.
Correct.
And I think that you're left without being seen is probably going to be directly tied to door-to-doc.
Yes.
And I hope, I'm so glad those are on your radar.
Absolutely. And just to let you know, there are different metrics that nationwide need to be measured. These are just a few of them. In the emergency department, there are many, many more, such as door-to-ekt, when somebody comes in with a chest pain. There are national standards for this. Even though we're a community, county hospital, does that mean, does not mean that our matrix are any different from anyone else. And we need to hold people accountable for those tasks. We need to start seeing patients within thirty minutes of them hitting our department, because what they look at is a full department, and sometimes, there are very, very poor outcomes if a nurse hasn't seen that patient, or a provider has not addressed those issues with the patient. Everybody needs to be dealt with dignity and respect. And we will be working with every caregiver at every contact point to make sure that that is occurring. So do you have any other questions for me, Commissioner? Thank you very much. JoBeth?
Thank you. I will be very brief with this and just give you some...
I'm going to stand next to her to support her.
Thank you, I need that.
I've got your back.
Thank you. So you can't hear me?
No.
Okay. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I will be very brief and give you just the highlights, and then we'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have afterwards. We always go through our volumes, so we had admissions of a hundred and sixty-four for the month of June. Last year, we had a hundred and eighty-five, so we're very close to where we were last year. We did three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight ER visits, or outpatient visits, I'm sorry, and one thousand eighty-three ER visits. We had three hundred and thirty-four surgeries for the month. Our gross patient revenue for the month was seventeen point seven million, which is in line with what we normally do on a monthly basis. The total net revenue was down to five point six million, which again is in line. We'd like to have that a little higher, but that's where we are right now. Total expenses for the month were five point six million, so you can do the math. Our bottom line for the month was a positive three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Our days cash on hand is fifty-six point nine, and that is down some from last year, but we did finish the Meditech project, which was taking up a considerable amount of our daily cash. So that is over with. We're still doing some cleanup on that, but the major expenditures for Meditech are over with. Our days in net AR were fifty-one point three. That is up a little bit more than what we're used to, but again, because of the Meditech conversion that we did in June, it slowed down our accounts receivable, so we're trying to get that back to where we were to begin with. Our average daily census is a seventeen point two. So any questions on any of that? We run about a hundred and ninety-six thousand in expenses every day. For the month of June, again, because of the Meditech conversion, we're below where we normally are. I mean, our accounts payment went up because we weren't able to get all the cash in and get those out, so I think it runs about a fifty day.
Fifty days?
Uh-huh.
So slightly less than our receivables?
Right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming, we really appreciate it. We hope to make this a monthly, monthly deal.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, I don't see anybody else in the audience, so we'll move on to Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee members, a summary report from July thirteenth to August tenth, two thousand seventeen. Item number one, policies and procedures, a continuation of those, the status remains the same, as we continue to revise and review our policies and procedures. Item number two, we currently have two vacancies in the department. Item number three, in our assessments, it's currently under revisions now, and that status remains the same also. Item number four, Sergeant Galindo's training report, this month, the refresher training in the use of force was conducted. Nine officers completed the use of force training, and six officers completed the OC spray training. Sergeant Galindo has also started the basic training for the three newly hired officers. And also, I didn't put this in your report, but our, the dispatch director did come down, and we're utilizing her training and certification, and what she did is, she conducted basic first aid and CPR training for the new hires and got them certified. So she said that she would continue to do that for us, so that's a big help, because we've been having to send somebody out and have to pay a cost for that, so she agreed to be able to help us with that. And she came out, she came down, she came through and took care of the new hires for us. So we really appreciate her doing that for us. Item number five, on the intervention inmate support program, we, the meeting was conducted, information pertaining to modifications of the inmate support program, and specifically, those modifications were discussed as were assisted programs, such as the Donian Accounting Stepping Up Program. This is a national incentive. I did attend the summit in Las Cruces, and I was very impressed with it, because it is specifically designed for jails. And it's, it runs pretty much parallel to the inmate support, but it enhances a lot of the programs and a lot of things that we were trying to do in the inmate support program. So I'm looking at that initiative right now, and it includes assisted diversion, peer programs, crisis intervention team, and forming a mental health alliances. I did get some information the other day, and it, under this national program, it prioritizes policy practice, funding improvements for people with mental illness in jails. And I just highlighted one, in looking through this, I highlighted one specific area here that I think is really important. Some of the goals that are in this program is to reduce the number of people that are going through the assessments whenever we bring them in at booking, and we do medical and mental health assessments whenever they come in, whenever they're booked into the jail. And that goal is to eliminate the incarceration of people who are held only because there's inadequate residential and outpatient services that are not available for those individuals with, that come up with mental health issues and medical issues, and I think that was one of the issues that we were discussing. Also, it reduces the number of people with mental health and/or co-occurring substance abuse disorders that are booked into the jail. Those are the two major issues that we're facing right now, and I think it's because Those are the two major issues that we're facing right now, and I think it's because of the addiction rate that we have right now in the county. And of course, that also influences why we're, you know, we were discussing the indigent fund and some of those issues, and that is one of the issues that we're looking at in the facility. So in this particular program, what it's done before is it has reduced the number of people with the substance abuse issues and also the mental health issues. And then one other item is to reduce the length of time people with mental illness and/or co-occurring substance abuse disorders remain in jail. So that's huge, if we can do that. So I'll be working on this particular project. We are, we have been in contact with the individuals in Las Cruces that have invited, that invited us to the summit, and we're going to try and bring them down here. And certainly, Charlene has been involved in this also to help out and see if we can put this project together and hopefully incorporate that, get that going in our program in the jail. I think it's going to work. Hopefully, if we can get, we can bring all the service providers together, we're going to, we're going to conduct a meeting with some of the court people first, and then from there, we'll expand it on, and hopefully, we'll try and get this program going, and hopefully, it'll help out with the individuals that are being incarcerated in jail right now, which is, you know, we've had some issues with trying to get them out, and they can belong there. So anyway, that's what I'll be working on, and hopefully, we can get that stepping-up program going with the initiative. Item number six is a recognition program, we're awaiting nominations for the month of July. Detention statistics, Grand County detention, the average daily population from 7/13/2017 to 8/10 is 88, 15 less than the last reporting period. High population males is 81, just 13 less. High population females is 26, two less. Currently, for August 10th, 2017, there were 69 inmates incarcerated in the facility, and that was 46 less than last month in the facility. And for the one-year period from August 11th, 2016 to August 10th, 2017, the average daily population confined in the facility was 91. The average length of stay for this reporting period is 64.98 days. And the statistics show there's a decrease in the inmate capacity as compared to last month. I really don't know why, for the last couple of three months, we've really, we've had a large increase in the inmates that are booked in the facility, and then all of a sudden, they just started dropping off. So that's a good thing, but I just, I don't, I really haven't been able to figure out what's going on and what's happening and why the decrease is all of a sudden. We usually have, we usually have certain months that we do have a decrease, but it, this is a pretty substantial drop-off in the number of inmates. And it's kind of a little unusual, but usually throughout the year, we'll have, we'll have certain months that we'll have an increase in inmates, and then they'll drop off, and then they'll increase a little bit, and then they'll drop off. But this is, this is a pretty large increase in the number of inmates, though. I don't have an answer for you why we've, why we've had that decrease, and it's so sudden in just a month period. Item number eight, the monthly agency arrest totals. Silver City Police Department is 80, Grand County Sheriff's Department is 29, New Mexico State Police is 23, Bear Police 8, Santa Clara 6, Hurdy Police 3, Western New Mexico Police had one. And currently, we do not have any inmates that we're being, that are being held for other facilities during this reporting period. Detention facility, we have 37 district court transports. Division 1 magistrate courts 51, Division 2, we have 6. We had none for Silver City Municipal, Santa Clara, or Bear Municipal Courts. Medical transport during this reporting period were 25. The total number of transports equaled 119 as compared to 112 last month. And again, I gave you the causes contributed to those transports, that I, that I could see that contributed to those transports. And item number 10, the probation violations, we had 25. We don't have any parole violators currently. Inmates awaiting transport to other facilities, the DOC or rehab centers, totals 5. Total inmates charged with warrants is 39, and the total number of special management inmates on this date were 8. That's my report, sir. That's from Mike.
Mike, can you explain the average length of stay seems extremely high to me, of nearly 65 days for the average length of stay. What contribute, what's contributing to that? Is it, your average length of stay, you're showing 64.98 days. Typically, it's running around 30?
On which one, ma'am?
Item 7, your average length of stay for this reporting period you're reporting, and it's also on your report, your-
On the average length of stay?
Yes. 64.98 days?
Yes, ma'am. And the only thing that I can see is they're remaining, they're staying longer in jail. Again, a lot of it has to do with the probation and parole, which, as you can see, we have a large number of probation and parole violators, and they're, they're remaining longer. And because of the high number of those that we do have, it's affected the number, the length of stay of the days, because they stay in there longer before they're adjudicated or because they're, or they're sentenced to the DOC. And those and the ones with the warrants are the two biggest reasons why they stay in jail so long before they get to court and are adjudicated one way or another.
You're welcome. Actually, one of them will be a follow-up. There's a table in my, in my packet, it's the second to the last page, that's labeled average length of stay.
Yes, sir.
And if I look at the row that says total at the bottom of that table, there's an average length of stay calculated there of 12.39 days. And then handwritten below that is 64.98.
Yes, sir.
It looks to me like the 64.98 is a sum of the different average stays listed above it.
And when we calculated that, whenever our Arconics calculated that, the total down there at the bottom, they're incorrect. So what we do is we, we have to add the felonies, the 17.38, and then the misdemeanors, and then the not applicable, and then the applicable, when you add all those up, and that's how we get the average length of stay.
So if on my baseball team, I've got four players who all bat 300, I don't add their averages up and find out that my team is batting 1,200. But I have to take a weighted average of those players' averages. I think you should trust your Arconics, if that's what it's called. It looks to me like 12.39 is actually the average length of stay, and not the 64.98. We should probably go into the details later, but I think Charlene's instinct is probably right, that it's not actually 65 days.
One of the things that we did with the Arconics and on your CJ I-5 report, whenever, whenever Arconics did this program, and when we had to make those adjustments, they were at that time also putting in the new, the newly booked individuals, which brought that average length of stay lower. So what we did is, because of that, what we did is we went ahead and, and all the new hires, because of their length of stay, it was, they were the new bookings that were coming in, and the number of people that we had in the new bookings, because that was higher, that brought that average length of stay down to 12.39.
But that's an accurate average. I mean, the fact is, we have folks who haven't been there that long at any given time. So I'm not sure you have to adjust away from that.
I think what he's saying is he's wanting to know how long somebody actually stays there start to finish.
Before they're released.
Yeah, which is a different staff.
That's very much a different staff. That's exactly right. I would present that as a different thing.
Yeah, that's the only way you see it anywhere normally, what I'm accustomed to seeing, is 24 to 32 days as an average. I just think the 65, but I know there are different factors that contribute. And I know I've asked you this numerous times before, if we cannot have our Arconics look at that report and make some adjustments. It'd be a whole lot easier to me to have an accurate report that reflects that, and I think they can do that. I've been in a facility before where it calculated the same way, and we knew it wasn't quite accurate as to what we're looking at. Perhaps maybe we could reach out to them again and have them either create you a different report in addition to this, so that, I mean, it accurately depicts what you're, what you're trying to describe.
Would you, would the statistic you would find most useful be average length of stay upon discharge? I mean, because that's what it sounds like you were gunning for, is the average length of stay upon discharge, not average length of stay at a snapshot.
Yes.
And you would find that most useful, too. Right. So I, yeah, maybe we can call it that. Because the other term is ambiguous. Average length of stay could mean several different things.
Well, yeah, because all of a sudden, you have a strange weekend where you have a whole lot of minor arrests.
Two-day homes.
Two-day homes, and they're gone. Well, it's going to skew both of them, not like that.
Yeah.
But if you have a lot of arrests on the weekend before you do your report, it's going to skew it also. Just as long as you do it the same way over time, then it's a legitimate stat.
Right, as long as we understand what it's measuring.
And I'm looking at it as we're paying money for that.
Well, okay, so I have a couple other things, Mike. I want to acknowledge that these number questions, I would guess from your perspective, have to be one of the least important parts of your job, and I totally get that. But from our standpoint, it's one of the few things we can understand what's going on in our county. So sometimes I focus on numbers, and I'm explaining that I realize that's not what you have to do all the time. On your CJ 5 DA, number 2.3, 2.3, Roman 2, Arabic 3, I've had questions on this one before, and it seemed like for a while, it didn't make sense again, and now it's back to not making sense. I think that the total convicted and the total unconvinced should equal the total there, and it doesn't. And I think that each of those subtotals should be the sum of the items above it, and they're not. And I guess it would be helpful to me, I'd have more confidence if things added up, so just following your attention to that. And on a more important issue, policies and procedures, I want to say I understand this is not all on your shoulders, that policies and procedures in the county pass by many eyes. I know our attorney's involved, I assume the union has a role in this. But I went back through your reports, and every single report I've gotten as a commissioner, which means this is the eighth, has said the exact same thing, that the status remains the same. It's important to me that, that we get new policies and procedures, updated policies and procedures in place, to the extent that you can help make that happen, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And on our policies and procedures, they're constantly being revised, you know, the association comes down, and a lot of, a lot of the issues that are, that pertain to the policies and procedures are driven by litigation, and a lot of things that are happening with all the other detention centers around the state. So we're constantly having to look at those and revise policies that we have. And it's about every year that we're going, we're looking at having to do those revisions. Something always comes up, either new law or something in Santa Fe or somewhere comes up, and detention centers are, and that's why they're constantly under revision. And we're having association counties that came down. We had to tighten some of our revisions up. They were adequate when they came down, but then because of some other litigations and stuff that had come about, then, especially with special management, then we turn around and they say, well, you need to tighten these up. So it's a constant revision, sir, of the policies and procedures.
All that being said, is it the case that at some point, we will have an updated policy and procedures made?
Yes, sir. They're going to come down, they're going to come down, we're working on those now, they're going to come down, and then they'll review them again, and then they'll, we'll have the detention administrators conference, and then what we'll do is we'll probably look at those, and there'll probably be some more revisions when we end up over there again. But at least we're trying to keep up, we're trying to keep up with whatever the revisions are, what we have to do. So it's not all of our policies, but it is some specific policies that there's always changes that we have to be revising. And we're working on those, and that's why that-
Something of a liability concern to me.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
Would I just want to follow that up by saying that I understand that policies are, need to be revised often, you know, as a result of litigation and those sorts of things, but we also have to have a policy that starts someplace. And so I agree with Mr. Brown, I think it's a, it's a potential liability concern, and I'd really like to see a policy manual that we can say, okay, this is done.
Carry on. On Roman 3, 3, what didn't add up there, sir?
So there were 16 convicted and 28 unconvinced, and that adds up to 64.
Oh, 48.
Well, these two add up to 64, and what's indicated here is that they add up to 69.
Is that because there's five awaiting transfer, which would make it 16?
That might be. It's not, that's not the way it's described here. Here it says 3A and 3B should equal this.
Oh, okay.
But that, you are right, that the gap is five, and there's that five sitting there, so that might be an explanation.
There's a five sitting there, and I don't know what's there.
Can I re-
There's something in the DOC, but there's something in our facility.
But aren't they either convicted or not convicted?
Well, they are convicted. It goes back to the report, I think, and, I don't know.
Should you type it in, if they're being transferred, it pulls them out?
Because they're not. Well, it's a linked conversation I could have with you, and my irritation, my irritation with Arconics, this is not my first battle with them, where their reports don't accurately depict what is actually happening. And we can get those changes, it's going to take a lot of work, and we'll work on that, I'm sure.
Like I say, it's the only view that we have of what's happening. And I realize it feels minor compared to actual handling of people, but it's all, it's all I have to go with. Anything else? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We had some flood damage out there at Mule Creek. It took us about a week to get a road put back in, and the unfortunate thing is about it, I had to take the blade off of him out there, he also covers that area down there around Duncan, at Bitter Creek and Carlos, so had to get him shipped down there because there's some roads washed out. So the people out at Cliff and the rest of Mule Creek will have to have a little bit of patience before getting back up there. It usually takes them about a week, week and a half to get everything fixed down there. I had one more road to chip seal, I was hoping to get it in when the, when the city was chip sealing, but because of the rains, we weren't able to. So they're over there, start patching on it today. I'm going to try and get it, get it done whenever they come back to fog seal. Other than that, it's just business as usual down there at the Road Department.
On the road carried by the bridge in Hurley, did that one get redone after all with the leftover asphalt and money from the North Hurley project?
No.
No? Were you planning to do that?
Yes, next, next year, just-
Okay, next year, okay.
Yeah, with the LGRF, just about everything over there in Hurley will get chip sealed to ship for the, the project that they're working on now.
Okay, thank you.
I tell you what, that, that job that Marla did down there on North Hurley is nice.
Nice.
Great job. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'll start with the airport. As if you don't know, Boutique started their new flight schedule today. There is a copy, well, I'll have a copy in each one of your boxes after this meeting's over, you can take a look at that. There's still the same amount of flights, just the time has changed on some of those arrivals and departures, and I'll have those in your box today. We've had a lot of rain, obviously, so we've had some leaks over at the terminal. Jason Locken, the maintenance supervisor, has got his guys over there, and hopefully, we got that fixed up with, you know, some kind of patching and making sure we keep the rain out of the, out of the facility. You guys awarded APEC the generator project, so we're hoping that will start probably October, and that's a generator that'll run the runway lights and the terminal in case we have a lightning strike, which we've had. We haven't had that this season yet. Fire season's pretty much over, all the planes from Forest Airways are gone, they're pretty much cleaned up. Boutique continues to be our main purchaser of fuel, so we're happy with that and working with them, and that's all I have over the next. If you have any questions about the airport. On the maintenance side, we're also working with the maintenance supervisor to look at our vendor contracts and looking at what we're purchasing. our vendor contracts and looking at what we're purchasing and see if we can get in there. We already know that we can make some changes that are going to save the county money, and that's really what I like about Mr. Lockett, he's able to get in there and work, he's done this before, and we want to work together and try to save the county money on the vendors' contracts that we have. The work at the detention center, there's been some, fixed the Sallyport door, there were some sewer problems we've fixed, fixed the lift on the gate, the people seem to keep breaking, starting on the landscaping, making sure that we clean up and, you know, if anybody's leaving, sharp objects or different stuff thrown out in the parking lot area, we're trying to clean those up as well. Silver Street, the new HVAC unit was put in on Friday, that is currently working, that is the area, the four-eighth area, hallways and the bathrooms, that is finally working. We also stripped the parking lot over there, we're not done yet because of the rains that have come in. We're trying to just make sure that our facilities have the right areas for handicap and making sure that people don't park in those handicap areas. Courthouse also, the elevator was down, we fixed that. The roof at the courthouse, we've patched that, one of the reasons is the, you know, the roof was on the ICIP is because we've done so much work inside in the courtroom, the big courtroom, the floors were redone, that'd cost about $6,000 repainting, there was electrical upgrade also, and so that concerns us, if we're doing all of that inside and we don't have a roof that's going to contain that water on the outside, then, you know, we're defeating the purpose there. Yeah, did we put the buggy before the horse, maybe, but I think now we can get on track and hopefully get that roof fixed, it is a must, but there's so much conduit and stuff up there, it's not going to be an easy project by no means, so we're hoping to get that done. Old Detention Center also had a number of weeds and overgrown stuff, and we're trying to work that, just like the Baton Park, weeds, weed, weeds are just our main concern right now, we're trying to clean those up everywhere. Look outside, as you know, the administrative parking lot was done by Mr. Oscar Lopez along with some of his friends this Saturday, working with the maintenance supervisor, he's working on his Eagle Scout badge, so we're going to hopefully get him a letter to thank him for that, as part of his community service in this program. I want to thank Earl, his staff for coming out and getting the parking lot cleaned, the airport manager also lending us the vacuum, and Jason coming out and making sure that these kids had the paint. Now, we're going to go back in there and probably with our maintenance crew and try to touch up some of the areas that have some issues with it, but overall, looks really good, and I'm happy for what they've done. I don't have anything else major unless you have any questions for me, that's my report.
I just want to make a comment, for this gentleman that did that striping, can you bring him in for Thursday's meeting and present him maybe with some kind of certificate from the county?
Well, we're hoping to do that in the September meeting, but we're going to get him a letter, he needs that, so we're quick to get a letter out to him for his-
Well, let's make sure we get him in here, one of the meetings.
Yeah, and that's what we talked about, Jason and I talked about this morning, to bring him in, and even with the friends that were out there, if they could come in and we could present him with something, we're doing that. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
I have a question about the roof, so we wait for the legislature to help us with the roof, how long would that be?
It might be ten years.
So you're probably ready to go ahead if they don't help us, yeah?
Right, we can't wait, we have to fix it, or we'll find the money, but it's just identified as a high priority.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Billings, that is our priority right now, and whenever we, we are checking it constantly to make sure we get the good rain in there, we're going to get up there and we're going to see if we got any issues, we're monitoring that on the day.
It's just hard for me to vote for the sound system for the conference center if we need a roof fix.
That's okay.
And speaking of the conference center, I wonder if your future approach could include some kind of indication of its usage, bookings, revenues, maybe we can get that from Mr. Terry in Cameron?
Mr. Terry in town is coming in.
Oh, really?
To you in September.
Okay, great. Any other questions? No? Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Real quick, Dugasa framing is complete, last time I was out there, they were getting the trusses up, and the water and sewer lines are to the site, so thank you to Earl and his crew for getting the trenches dug for that. LS Mesa, most of the punch list is complete, however, the architect, and I don't consider this a bad thing, I've been very pleased with the architect on that, he went back to the contractor and said, your as-bills aren't good enough, redo them, so.
The what?
The as-bills, those are critical for, especially for Jason and the maintenance, to be able to know exactly how things were done, because things change from the way that the original plans were written, so we need those as-bills, if they ran a conduit different, ran two of them instead of one, whatever, we need to know where those are, so. One of the main things is the slope changed a little bit, so we need to know about that, too. I was going to talk about the ICIP, but there's going to be more discussion, so I'll leave that one alone.
How's the well, has it been certified and what happened yet on LS Mesa?
So they did get water, I do not have an answer as to whether they got the well connected, I do believe that they have, so that we can test the rest of the equipment, but they did find water, I want to say somewhere around 800 feet.
And how many gallons per minute?
That I don't know. I do know that they have a very large storage tank that they purchased also, and it's got two inline pumps.
As long as we can fill it, we're all right.
Yeah.
All right.
Not sure you should put on your ICIP discussion, I don't know exactly what your understanding was, but I don't think we're going to come back to that topic, but we decided we were done for today.
No, what I was going to say on the ICIP is that I had a completed ICIP.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, we have more discussion on that, so.
On Thursday?
Yes.
Right.
Correct. So the Water Trust Board, I submitted two notice of intents for Rosedale Road and the North Hurley Road, trying to continue the construction that we have on those. They are just notice of intents, I will attend the mandatory training in September, of course, it'll be in front of the commission by resolution when we do the application. Applications will open up in September, so I will have that ready to go on the September We talked about the grant for the comprehensive plan that'll be on the meeting also, I do have a little bit of information on the asset management plan grant that you guys approved for me to apply for. The application is on the September agenda for NMFA, and tentatively, I told you that we may qualify for more, tentatively, they say that we do qualify for $37,500 for that one. It does have to be approved by their board, but hopefully that is a true statement for that. GIS and mapping, Daniel is going to be attending a GIS training in Las Cruces in September, I believe this is being paid for by E-911 Grant in conjunction with Barb Sokowski from Dispatch, she worked with him to get that in place. And one thing, Daniel's position does have him in charge of the E-911 database and the rural address for the county, so it's very critical that he attend these types of trainings. And last, the airport broadband, WNM Communications installed the fiber, that was, that no cost to the county, so they got that done out there. We did pay to have the conduit from the roadway into the terminal, the pilot's lounge, and to the T-hangers. The Forest Service did pay for their own, and Scott Nichols did pay for his own conduit to go in. Any other private pilots that may have hangers that they own or lease from us out there, and they want it, they need to coordinate with WNM Communications, but we do have that fiber now available on the roadway out there, so. You don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Questions? No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything today?
It's not really a report. The September meeting, I know I sent an email asking you because our September meeting falls on the week of the county fair, but it looks like I have more difficulty obtaining a call on the week before and the week after, so I guess we'll just leave it that week, and Commissioner Ramos will have to serve as the chair because that will affect Mr. Calston, unless you would like to combine all of those on Tuesday, we could do one meeting in September, have a work session, and a regular meeting on Tuesday. No, the 19th and the 21st, which is when it's regularly scheduled, we can combine them.
That week?
We didn't tell us that.
Well, that's why I asked for the 24th.
Well, that's a regular, okay, never mind, then I'll go back to the drawing board, I guess, so.
Twenty-fourth is Sunday. I'm sorry, the following week, I'm sorry, the following Thursday.
The 28th.
I think you probably got all this feedback.
I did.
I'm backpacking the 11th through the 14th with my Skoda. I thought I timed it perfectly.
Yeah, that actually is. You don't need no shepherd.
Brett, can you please answer that?
We need female shepherd.
Okay, then we'll just schedule, we'll just do it both on Tuesday, the 19th, then.
The 19th.
It'll just be a long meeting. We'll combine the work session.
And that's because the 21st is a problem?
Yes.
21st is the hog show.
The hog show.
That's the pigs.
Don't tell me you're the featured hog.
So Chairman of Vice Chairman are both on the 21st, so we can combine, if that's okay with you guys, we combine the work session and the regular meeting on September 19th.
Are you okay with that?
I won't be here that whole week.
You won't be here that whole week.
Don't even try to call in.
Yeah, I'll be out in the mountains, yes.
Oh, you got a tag.
All right. And just FYI, auditors will be in our office next week, so we will be extremely busy, and I would just urge the department head's elected officials to have some patience with us and POs and getting back to you, because we will be tremendously busy. And just want to clarify to the public that our audits are public information, those are available on the state auditor's website, nothing's redacted, those are available for anyone to pull up and look.
Commissioners, you have anything today?
I do. So I have a couple of things, one, we had our first meeting with Juniper Advisory, the organization that we hired to have a look at how we can... Okay. Moving on, I sensed that there was a little tension around the discussion about the ordinance for the off-highway vehicles, and I just wanted to say that I did turn in a fair number of revisions to that ordinance, the majority of them are items that are already in the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act, that based on the interactions that I've had with constituents, we'd like to have spelled out in the ordinance, and then some other items that are strictly about safety that we'd like to have spelled out in the ordinance, and so I would just say that I appreciate the fact that the public has given me lots of input, and also appreciate the Commissioner's patience while we get going on this. I want to talk just a little bit about the detention center, we have had a lot of conversations around the detention center, and our challenges with mental health, people who have mental health issues, and appropriateness of incarceration, et cetera, and I just want to acknowledge that Kathy Arias went out of her way last week to help us with the situation that was really tragic and unfortunate with the gentleman, and I really appreciate her efforts, and I look forward to a future series of meetings that we're going to have to figure out how to do a better job taking care of people with mental health issues instead of incarcerating them, and I was really pleased to hear Ms. Arias say something in her report about how important she thinks that is, because it is causing some serious issues at the detention center. And then, the last thing I want to say is, I just want, you know, there's been so much back and forth about the cancer center and all the things that have happened with that, and the topic of the hospital, I think, has been at the top of everybody's minds for months, and something that I think has gotten lost in that conversation for many, many months is the just incredible people that work at GRC, the regular folk that keep the doors open, the lights on, and the patients taken care of up at that hospital, and they love the hospital, they work really hard up there, and really, really believe in the work that they're doing, and I just want to acknowledge how critical those frontline patient care people are, and how important they are to the success of our hospital.
Thank you. I just want to say something real brief before, because I'll report more on the actual meeting, but I just want to say, I do respect and I do appreciate the questions you all have. You all have actually brought up some very good questions, and I appreciate that, you too, Commissioner Billings, so I really do appreciate, I don't want you to think that otherwise, because I think you all bring a lot of good questions to the table with this five-man commission, I really do appreciate that. Now, on the revisions on some of these ordinances, I think that's really good if we're reverting back to other ordinances and other laws and putting it back in there. Now, matters of opinion, I think we could just change those at the very end when we're voting on them, that's kind of the way I feel about those ordinances. Now, true hard facts, like you were pointing out, I welcome those all day long, but like I said, matters of opinion, I think, should be kept till we're voting, and try and get those passed or not added on at that point. But I will report more on our actual meetings with NMAC and what have you the next meeting on Thursday. Yeah? Commissioner? Yeah, a couple things. One is on the joint powers agreement that we'll be voting on on Thursday. You know, this affluent storage project reminded me that I would wholeheartedly support an amendment to the JPA of the cap entity if it allowed the cap entity to go back and fund projects like that. It's very frustrating to think about having to put off certain things, having to look around for grant money, having to phase in projects, when that money is sitting there, right? We could afford to do that project, we could finish the financing on the regional water project with that money, so I would totally support a JPA that allowed the cap entity to do that. And I believe, I believe, you're the representative on there, I believe that that was considered and rejected, and they said they wanted to focus narrowly on this question of using FMI's infrastructure to move existing water out of the region, which is, of course, as you already know, why I oppose the amendment, but if somebody can bring them to their senses tomorrow and say, we want to open this JPA so that we can fund those other good projects that are out there, that other three counties have projects also, they could fund with that money. And, you know, as concerned as I have always been that we're just letting that money go away without any good use. On the ORV item, not on the procedure, which we talked about earlier, but on the question of whether they belong on paved roads or not, Commissioner Ramos described that as sort of the point of the ordinance, and I guess that's why it's a matter of opinion, because to me, that's not the point of the ordinance. Where the ordinance makes sense to me is when ranchers and other folks who live on some of the, you know, 630 miles of unpaved county roads can efficiently get from one place to another using a county road without breaking the law, that makes a lot of sense to me. Wanting to use the paved roads, but having to stop at the city limits because those are excluded, doesn't make that much sense to me, and I feel like if you're going to use a paved road, you should use a vehicle that's been approved for paved roads, so that's why it makes sense to me to actually eliminate those from the ordinance, and I'll be requesting that, and whether that comes up as part of the draft or as something we add on later, that will be essentially up to Abby. But that's my thinking on that ordinance. And last, I think Commissioner Billings made an excellent point, that for an hour, we occupied a couple of extraordinarily well-paid people from the hospital, having to listen to us. to us, and I wonder if we couldn't move the hospital report higher up in the agenda?
How about all ten?
I would not have a problem with that at all.
Maybe first thing, so they know they hear nine o'clock, they report.
The only issue there is that, I think, you know, throughout the meeting, there might be questions that need to be answered by them or be, you know, throughout the work session, but, I mean, someone like, yeah, but someone like the administrator, I mean, they could probably lead after their report.
Right, and actually, Bernard and I just talked about that this morning, that we will be creating a line up at the top prior to going through the agenda, that will be Heather, Regional Medical Center CEO, report.
That's fine.
If you want to move everything up, we can adjust that, but we actually just had that discussion this morning because it was really not, she's a busy woman, and she's actually our entire meeting to give a 10-minute report.
I can just see two-dollar meters running, one for the CFO, one for the CEO, and I think, wow, it costs us a lot, and I would sit here, and probably no frustration on that part, but further, you know, there's, I don't know, how do you guys feel, do you all need to sit through this whole meeting? Or I'm thinking about Earl.
They're not going to say.
They're all right.
He's an old timer.
Like Commissioner Ramos said, if you guys have any questions, we're not going to be here to answer during the meeting.
It's the only time we ask him to come, so I think he'll be here. So, I don't care if you move them all up or if you just put the hospital up there, but I'd like to just get them out here as quickly as possible.
Thanks, Harvey.
That's all I have. So, I only have one good thing to say.
But that's all you.
And that's all I'm going to say. I want to tell you how proud I am of David Buck down at Manzanita Ridge for doing the right thing. Those guys are upstanding humans, they did the right thing, and I hope that U of A does the right thing and goes ahead, and when they put that painting back out, they tell the story about the good people in Silver City. And that's all I got to say.
One more thing, I need to request a work session, I mean, a sales session for personnel on Thursday.
Okay. You don't have a problem with that? Let it be said, let it be done, I think Moses said that. For my time. Anything else? Okay, to take Moses to adjourn?
One second.
All those persons have got to say no? Motion passes.